Thank you and good evening, everyone. I have to say, I'm very excited that the weather is starting to finally be nicer. I think the other day it was around 80 degrees, which is just lovely. But don't start thinking about summer just yet. We're not out of the woods, as Sophie said. AP exams are coming up very soon, and I, for one, am nervous. Nonetheless, April has been full of interesting events, and I'm happy to share them with you. Firstly, the Radnor Color Guard had two competitions on April 1st at Garnet Valley, just before starting their spring break. The team's hard work and dedication paid off as they placed first in both competitions. In the first competition, they scored an impressive 84.45, and in the second competition, they scored even higher with an 85.01. I'm not actually sure what those numbers mean, but I've been told they're very impressive.
They're good scores.
These achievements have placed the team in third place for the championships in the main circuits, which took place on April 23rd at the RWJ Barnabas Health Arena. The team did well at championships and will certainly have more success in the future. Moving on, the Radnor Boys Swimming Team had a successful season and closed it off with a strong performance from junior Andrew Yu at the state meet at Bucknell. Yu recorded a time of 21.73 in the 50-meter freestyle, finishing 22nd, which is very impressive for this competition. With the team's banquet on Wednesday, the 29th, and the season over, the Raptors are excited to jump into the offseason, and we know that they will work hard in the offseason to dominate next year as well. As the spring sports season continues, the Radnor Softball Team is already starting strong. In a thrilling home game against Chai Chester, the team won by a narrow margin of 7-6 in the ninth inning. Senior Megan Dole played a significant role in securing the victory by pitching the entire game and also scoring the winning run. Although they faced tough losses against Upper Dublin and Strathaven, the team maintains a solid record with more games to come. Finally, possibly the most important thing to happen to Radnor this year, pajama day, was yesterday. And I have to say, that was the most comfortable I've ever felt in school. This, of course, is a part of a greater initiative going on at the high school, which is Kindness Week. During this week, each day is dedicated to a certain aspect of kindness to encourage positive relationships and discourage bullying. Monday was pajama day. Today was Posituesday, where students wore their favorite sports gear and kept a positive attitude all day. Tomorrow is Wellness Wednesday, where students wear workout clothes and focus on themselves and self-affirmation. Thankful Thursday is, you guessed it, on Thursday. Students will show gratitude by wearing something orange. And finally, students on Friendly Friday will wear Radnor apparel and do something sweet. I have already seen this initiative and the effect it's having at Radnor. Students are overall being kind to each other, paying out more compliments, and creating a positive environment. Unfortunately, I do not have a rhyme for you like last month, but to wrap it up, Radnor shows no signs of stopping, and we will certainly see more exciting things from our students. Thanks you so much.
Thank you, Nico and Sophie. Great report always. And I'm going to turn the meeting over now to our superintendent for his report. If he can match that entertainment value, will remain to be seen.
No, I can't match that, but I am very appreciative, first off, also, of the comments about the year isn't over yet. So we've got a lot left academically as well, but we are coming close to that end of the year with a lot of exciting activities. Maybe we should try pajama board meeting night. If that's really working well at the school, we could try a pajama board meeting night. For superintendent's remarks, I want to share the first slide. I want to just give an update on our focus groups, so we can go to the next slide. We are conducting focus groups with our students, our parents, our staff, as we look and search for our next principal for Radnor High School. If you did not have an opportunity to participate in the focus groups, you can certainly reach out to Human Resources. We want to understand what are the qualities that our community is looking for in our next principal, and we'll be also involving board members and staff and parents involved in that interview process as we move forward. On the next slide, this one is an exciting one. We are ending the school year officially tonight on the calendar, as long as the board supports it, which I believe there is unanimous support for. We have not used any snow days this year. We didn't even use any virtual days this year. So we will be ending the school year three days early. So our last day will now move to June 15th. Will be our last final day of school. So that will be made official tonight on our consent agenda. The next slide, wanted to mention our legislative breakfast and thank Dr. Kearney and everyone in the administrative team that took the time to set it up, Mr. Jubalier from GRCC and the board members part of GRCC for all their hard work in setting up our legislative breakfast. It is a wonderful, and I want to thank the local legislators for being there to support it as well. We had an opportunity to bring some of our staff together, the admin team, and students to talk about issues facing public education, facing specifically our students. It is always a great reminder for us administratively to give more opportunities to talk to our kids about what's going on and what's going on in their lives. So it was a very helpful event, and we look forward to continuing that tradition in future years as well. I want to give congratulations to two new administrators that are on the board for approval tonight. We are recommending that Ms. Tedji Brennan move from our acting director of communications to our full-time director, no longer acting director of communications. We want to thank Mrs. Brennan for all that she has done in stepping in as our acting director for the last few months. Her and the entire team have done such an outstanding job that we are excited to be recommending you now to be our director of communications and all that that will bring as we move forward and continue the tradition of great communication in our community, but also continue to look for those opportunities to how we can share what's going on in our district. So we're excited for that tonight, and we're also excited for Mr. John Smarecki. John, we're recommending him to be our next assistant principal at Wayne Elementary, having gone through a rather lengthy and extensive interview process with many rounds as we do through our process. We want to congratulate John. I'm going to ask that the board, when we get to our priority action, maybe we could have a motion to move these two items off of personnel and conduct these two items earlier, just because, you know, I'm seeing that John and his family is here, and I don't know if they can hang out till the end of the meeting. We don't want to have to do that, though. I think, I don't want to jinx this. I think it will be a quick meeting, but we'll see. So congratulations to them. School Library Month. I don't often, we have a week, a month for everything, so I don't often in the superintendent remarks note the different months that are, the different weeks that celebrate different staff, different position, different things in school districts. But I am noting this one only because I found myself in our focus groups at our high school library often the last month, and just to see how many students are constantly in the high school library. And then as I go to the other buildings, seeing the use K to 12 of our libraries is really astounding, and it's something wonderful. So it's School Library Month, and our kids are constantly taking advantage of the libraries that we provide them in our district. So wanted to recognize that. And I want to talk about our math program selection overview. So tonight on Consent Agenda, we are recommending our new math program, and I wanted to, we have had several conversations at Curriculum Committee about this recommendation. I wanted to ask Dr. Dukovich if he could give us a quick summary, not to repeat the entire presentation that we've had at Curriculum, because we've had several presentations about this. We had several math teachers who joined us at our last curriculum meeting, but asked Dr. Dukovich to give us a summary of the reasons why we're moving forward with this program and the benefits of this new program.
All right. Thank you, Ken, and good evening. It's not every year that we adopt a new curricular resource for math. In fact, it's been close to 10 years since we've done that, so it's an important decision, no question about it. One question a lot of folks have asked is, why do we engage in looking for a new math program? You know, what was the issue we were trying to pursue? First, our current version of our current curricular resource, Math in Focus, is 2013. It is a discontinued resource. The new version is now 2020, and so print and digital material for Math in Focus 2013 would no longer be available to us after this year. So we had to make a determination whether do we move to the newest version in 2020 or pursue another alternative. Secondary to that, as part of our curriculum cycle process, we did a math audit last year, which is, again, a common component in the process of six years. In that math audit, we determined that it would be prudent to review other curricular materials, since so many more programs have come to fruition over the last few years. For those of you who like to go back into the archives of presentations, it was May 10th of last year, almost a year today, where we presented our audit findings, Dr. Kearney and the team. And if you were to go back to that presentation, specifically slides 21 and 22, as part of our recommendations of the audit, one was to review K-8 math textbooks and materials for the 23-24 school year, and that's precisely what we did. All right, so that led to our process, which is now on the screen. And not to read this to anyone, and again, you can access our presentation from April 18th if you want to learn more. We went through an 18-month process to determine various materials and programs that were available to us, how well they rated in third-party evaluations, how well they aligned to Common Core standards for Pennsylvania, the quality of the materials, and we worked through a number of different things, from engaging with vendors through presentations, through engaging with school districts who had already piloted and implemented different programs, to piloting several units of our own in different grade levels and two different programs, and ultimately surveying our staff a number of times to the degree of the quality of the materials, and arriving in a recommendation, which was Reveal Math. So why was Reveal, the last question I'll answer, was why was Reveal the chosen curricular resource? One, it aligned really well, and actually, if you could move that to the next slide, Permanent Director of Communications, thank you. It aligned very well with our RTSD teaching and learning principles that are focused in mathematics. As I mentioned previous, it's well-aligned with the PA Common Core standards for mathematics. It was very well-rated and met at the highest standards. Ed Reports, which is, again, a third-party evaluator. We found the quality of materials and student-teacher assessment and digital were all excellent. Generally, the program itself is a balanced approach to mathematics. It's built upon current educational research and learning science. It's inclusive of both foundational skills and mastery, as well as the abstract and authentic tasks. It also has a strong logic learning model that we found to be really effective. Another indicator was our experience with our pilot and our feedback from the other school districts that have implemented Reveal and the type of success that they've seen. And finally, the impact of our teachers' experience with Reveal. And when we did survey them, 87% of our K-5 teachers chose Reveal, and 100% of our sixth-day teachers in math chose Reveal. So we landed on a K-8 program, which, and to start, was not something that we made mandatory, but we were fortunate to land in that respect. Some of the quick highlights from our teachers, and again, you can go back to the April 18th and watch for yourself, from Reveal was the mathematical thinking and discourse amongst peers was a highlight, some STEM connections, which supports authenticity and real-world application, the fact that Reveal builds and develops understanding through repeated content and connections and tying things back together. Resources were comprehensive, differentiated, and adaptable for teachers, which was a real highlight. And finally, it supports and fits in well with our MTSS platform. So we found that all these factors led us to the recommendation for Reveal. And before I stop talking, I just wanted to thank Dr. Kearney, who was integral in the process, as well as our pilot teachers and our teachers who helped present at the board curriculum meeting in April.
Thank you, Dr. Dukovich, and I want to thank the Curriculum Committee for working through this for the last few months, as well as we move forward with this recommendation for this evening. Next is just upcoming events, and as Sophie and Nico mentioned, there's a lot going on right up to that prom, very soon for the juniors. I think we should give an invite maybe to the board, because I'm sure they like the boogie, as you mentioned, and see if the board members want to come and join the prom. A lot of exciting things happen as we approach the end of the school year, and that concludes my remarks tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Bachelor. Can I do a shameless plug for the Radnor Township School District app, where you can find all of those upcoming events very easily if you subscribe to the app? That's my new go-to now. I know Ms. Kluzman is relieved that I don't get the, she doesn't have to send me that list anymore, but it's very handy, the Radnor Township School District app. For those of you who don't already have it, I encourage you to check it out. All right, thank you for those remarks, and thank you also, Dr. Dukovich, for contextualizing this change in the math curriculum. I assume that there's going to be some more school-based communication about it, too, but this was a great way to contextualize the item that's on our agenda tonight, which is approval of the math textbooks that go along with that new program. That will move us into the section of the agenda, Public Comment. As per Board Policy 6, the board provides an opportunity at each regular board meeting for eligible participants to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. Public comment can be made either in person or by telephone recording when circumstances prevent a community member from attending the board meeting. For details on how to make public comment by telephone recording, please visit rtsd.org/board. Policy requires the public commenters should state their full name and town and may make one comment per public comment period for no more than four minutes per comment. Administration will respond to general questions raised during public comment sometime after the meeting. Parents and guardians with specific questions or comments about their child's educational experience are encouraged to contact their child's teacher and/or building principal. Do we have any public comment in the room this evening? Seeing none, Ms. Brennan, do we have any recorded public comment?
None.
Okay. Then we will move now into our reports from board committees, and we'll start with the Curriculum Committee, and that's you, Dr. Babson as chair.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So the Board Curriculum Committee met on Tuesday, April 18th at 5:00. And agenda items included additional revisions to the instructional calendar, approvals of student trips, and a new student club, and two fantastic presentations on our music program, there is an audit for that, and our new math curriculum, Reveal Math, which Dr. Dukovich just summarized. And you can look at Consent Agenda items 11 and 12 for more on those. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 23rd at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Dr. Babson. And for the Facilities Committee report, we'll turn to the chair, Ms. Monahan.
Okay, Facilities met on April 18th, and on the agenda was a review of change orders for the Radnor High School Accessibility and Wellness Study, an update on Ithin, and discussion on the name change to the road through the Radnor High School property to Emmental and Elway. On the consent agenda, under Section 13, the change orders and the change in name will be, is on consent. The next meeting is scheduled for May 9th.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan, and we'll turn to Mr. Moore to give the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mrs. Goldman. The Finance Committee met on April 11th. In addition to routine items, you will see on the Consent Agenda a settlement agreement that was discussed, not at the April 11th meeting, but the prior meeting, that is now finally on the business meeting agenda. We also have a number of priority action items that were discussed. In his role as our board secretary, we have a couple of items related to the appointment of trustees or board members to the Delaware County Community College and the DCIU, and we have, most notably, a vote on the proposed general fund final budget. And the next meeting of the Finance Committee is anticipated to be on May 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and that brings us to the Policy Committee report. Ms. Duffy as chair.
Yes, thank you. The Policy Committee met on Tuesday, April 11th at 5:00 p.m. We reviewed six policies that are on tonight's Consent Agenda. There were two second reads, Policy 704 Maintenance and Policy 716 Integrated Pest Management. We also had four policies for first read, 709.1 Video Camera Surveillance, 249 Bullying, 218.1 Weapons, and, I have 83, 83 Breach of Computerized Personal Information. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, May 9th at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy, and Government Relations and Communications Committee Chair, Mr. Jubalier.
Good evening. Dr. Bachelor did a wonderful job giving this month's report by mentioning and thanking the pertinent players in our annual legislative breakfast, which we held in lieu of having a committee meeting in April. That breakfast was held, as was mentioned, on April 13th, and we enjoyed having State Representative and Radnor alum, school board and high school, Lisa Borowski, as well as a staff member from Senator Capaletti's office. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 23rd at 6:30.
Thank you, Mr. Jubalier. And before we move into priority discussion and action, as Dr. Bachelor referenced earlier, we're going to request someone to make a motion to move something from our Consent Agenda. That would be item 15.01, that's our personnel items up for a vote at this time.
So moved.
All right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Stern and a second from Ms. Dunn. Is there anybody other than a sweeping congratulations to the two people who happened to be present in the room and subjects of the personnel report, Mr. Smarecki and Ms. Brennan? Congratulations to all of you. I'm going to call the vote, and then I will officially congratulate you again. All those in favor of approving item 15.01, please indicate by raising your hand, and Mr. Moore, give a shout.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. That motion passes nine to nothing, and congratulations to Ms. Brennan and Mr. Smarecki. And your child was beautifully behaved and probably now wants to stay for the rest of the evening, so feel free.
And, John, we're excited to welcome you, welcome you to Wayne. We do have another situation where we have a Nancy and a John. We already have a Nancy and a John combo at Radnor. It's been working very well, so we have now another Nancy and John combination now at Wayne Elementary. Different spelling of the name, John, but we'd like to welcome you and all your experience you've had in your previous districts. You came, are coming to us, I know from the feedback we've received from your districts is just glowing, so we're excited that you'd be joining Radnor, specifically Wayne. I think I told you, maybe I didn't, I put you on the spot. Do you want to say anything?
Really throwing you in feet first here. Yeah. There's the little microphone. Just push the button there.
Which button? Okay, there we go. Hundred percent already. So first and foremost, thank you to school board members, as well as administration, presenting my name today, and as well as accepting that. It was an honor meeting many of you prior to the meeting. I'm extremely excited, as well as grateful for the opportunity, and look forward to supporting the students' families, as well as the staff and Mrs. Ferguson at Wayne Elementary School. Although I'm new to the district, I am more than familiar with the high quality of expectations and conservative effort to providing a very strong education and student-centered education to all students, and something that I look forward to, continuing and furthering the good work that's already happening at Wayne Elementary School. So thank you again, very much appreciated.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations, thank you. And whenever I make eye contact in a meeting, you're supposed to look down. That's what the other administrators do, then you don't get called on. Yeah. And Tedji, I want to, so welcome, John, and please, you and your family, don't feel like you need to stay. Congratulations again. And then Tedji, again, welcome, Tedji. Do we put you on the spot, Tedji? You do a lot of communicating.
I feel like everybody's heard me speak before, so, but I do want to say, I am so thrilled to be taking on this or continuing in this position. It's been a wonderful gig already, and I hope to continue working as hard as my whole department has, and continuing to work with all the fantastic people that we have in the district, from students on up. We really had a great time and hope to continue doing that. So thanks. I'm excited.
Thanks, Tedji. Congratulations.
Great, thank you. That was, I'm glad we were able to do that tonight, and congratulations again to everybody who's on the personnel agenda, including the two subjects in the room tonight. That moves us to our priority discussion and action. It's item 7.01, the Appointment of Trustees for the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees. The recommended action is that the board votes to reappoint Elizabeth A. Shepherd-Rabadaum as trustee to the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees. At the April 11th, 2023 Finance Committee meeting, administration was given direction to recommend the reappointment of Elizabeth A. Shepherd-Rabadaum to a new six-year term as trustee to the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees, which will expire June 30th, 2029. Can I entertain a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Stern. Are there any comments or questions before we go to the roll call? All right, so Mr. Pauling, would you kindly do the roll call?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Babson?
Aye.
Ms. Duffy?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Ms. Goldman?
Aye.
Mr. Jubalier?
Aye.
Ms. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Solomon?
Yes.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Okay, nine in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Pauling. Then we move to our second priority discussion and action item, that is item 7.02 on the agenda, the Appointment of Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors. The recommended action is that the board approves the appointment of Tracy Karwowski, Karwowski, forgive me, Dr. Kristin Larson, Barb, Barbara Harvey, Margaret Rovinsky, and Joanna Hopkins to serve on the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for the term commencing July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2026. At the April 11th, 2023 Finance Committee meeting, administration recommended the approval of the following candidates for the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for the term, as I've said, commencing July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2026. And Mr. Pauling, are we doing all of them in one vote per board member roll call, or do we approve the candidates one by one?
We can do them all together in one vote.
Okay. And I just want to flesh this out for anybody who might be listening. Tracy Karwowski is from Garnet Valley School District. Dr. Kristin Larson represents Havreford School District. Barbara Harvey represents Marple Newtown School District. Margaret Rovinsky represents Springfield School District, and Joanna Hopkins is representing the William Penn School District. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Stern. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. Any comments or questions?
Can I just clarify, because I think it's helpful for the public to understand why there's nobody on the Radnor list here? These are the districts for whom a representative is due, and these people would have been nominated by those districts to represent them.
Yes, they have staggered terms on the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board, just like the other school boards do, and so this is the time when these five districts of the 15 that make up the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board, they're, these three districts, those term are ending, and Radnor's, I think, is coming up in the next cycle or two. So does that help?
That was my understanding, but I think it's helpful for the public to understand why we're voting on other school districts' representatives. Thanks.
Right, and this is taking place at every school district in the county. So, all right, and with that, Mr. Pauling, would you mind doing the roll call?
Ms. Goldman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Ms. Goldman, I did have a, just a clarifying question. So these five people are currently on the DCIU board?
Yes, they are all incumbents.
Okay.
Good question. Any other questions or comments before turning it over to Mr. Pauling? All right, seeing none, Mr. Pauling.
Okay, Dr. Babson?
Nay.
Ms. Duffy?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Ms. Goldman?
Aye.
Mr. Jubalier?
Aye.
Ms. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Solomon?
I abstain from this vote.
And Ms. Stern?
Nay.
Okay, was, Dr. Babson, was yours a nay as well? I couldn't hear, sorry with the partitions. Okay, so that looks like it was six.
Six affirmative, two opposed, and one abstained.
One extension. Okay, great, thank you very much. Moving on to item number three for priority discussion is the agenda item 7.03, approving the 2023-2024 Proposed General Fund Final Budget. The recommended action is that the board adopts the 2023-2024 Proposed Final General Fund Budget in the amount of $115,105,357, representing a real estate tax increase of .3958 mils, or 2.78% over 2022-2023. The next step in the budgeting process in accordance with Act 1 is for the Board of School Directors to adopt the 2023-2024 Proposed Final General Fund Budget, which is what we are, is before us tonight. Therefore, in conformance with Special Session Act 1 of 2006, the board hereby authorizes the adoption of a proposed final general fund budget for fiscal year 2023-2024 in the amount of $115,105,357 and a millage rate of 14.6329 mils. The budget will be available on the district website for at least 20 days prior to the adoption of the final general fund budget on May 30th, 2023. Administration will advertise the intent to adopt the final budget no later than 10 days prior to adoption on May 30th, 2023. And I know Mr. Pauling has remarks to make, but we need a motion and a second to entertain that.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. Mr. Pauling.
Good evening, thank you very much. I've prepared some slides, a lot of which will be recap from what we've already discussed over the last few months at the Finance Committee, but just to contextualize what we're asking you to approve this evening, I put together some slides and some information on the 23-24 Proposed Final Budget. And if I can get the slides to advance. I may need our Permanent Director of Communications to help me with this. For a projection of where we are for this year, so as we get more information through the first seven, eight to nine months of this fiscal year, I start to work on projections of where I'm anticipating that we're going to end up in the current fiscal year. And as you can see, we are anticipating having a surplus of about $3.3 million. Primarily, we are ahead of where we were anticipating our revenues in real estate tax collections, especially in our interest earnings. We've outperformed that by about $700,000 of what we anticipated just because of the Fed rate increases that have been accelerated over the last six to nine months. That's really helped us with our interest earnings and our investments and what we are able to earn and generate in revenue for the district. And then our expenditures, we're looking to come in under our $110 million budget of $109.2 million. So, the variance to where we were anticipating the budget to end up in the projection is that $3.3 million, which is 2.99%. I'll round it up to three, but even the 2.99% sounds a little better for, for my purposes. So, that would leave us a fund balance at the end of this year at $34.6 million. So, you can see we've carried that over into the budget year for 23-24 as our starting fund balance, and then we are able to balance our budget at $115.1 million on both the revenue and the expenditure side. So, back in February, we presented a preliminary budget that was balanced at $114.7 million that did factor in a 3.09% tax increase, which was still under the 4.1% maximum through the Act I index for the 23-24 fiscal year. Since that meeting in February, we made adjustments to the budget based on some information that became available. The governor presented his budget in early March with proposed increases to basic education and special education subsidies, anticipating that we are going to see additional funding from Harrisburg, probably not to the amounts and maybe in those specific line items that the governor's proposed. We conservatively increased our estimate of flat funding from the state to factor in 5% of what was in the governor's proposed budget, and that equated to $193,000. We were able to save $169,000 in what we anticipated for our electricity costs. We worked through the Delaware County Intermediate Unit with a consultant, Provident Energy, and they helped track the market for us and the other schools in the county. We held off on locking in our rates till an opportune time. By doing that and, say, waiting a few months to lock in our rates, we were able to save $169,000 in our budget by doing that. And then the third item was a larger-than-anticipated increase in our prescription drug costs of $547,000. So, factoring those three items into the budget on March 21st, we left the revenue budget with the adjustment to the state funding, but still leaving the 3.09% tax increase in there. And then factoring the expenditure changes, it did leave us with a slight deficit in the budget. And we were looking at different options as we got to tonight to figure out how to bridge that gap. So, as I was working on the projections for the current year and looking at our past trend on what we collect in our real estate tax collection, so every July we issue our real estate tax bills, we anticipate a certain percentage of those that are going to be paid during the current period and before we turn them over to delinquency. And looking at the past collection percentages and what we've collected this year, I felt comfortable increasing our assumption of that from 96.5% up to 97%. And by making that adjustment, which I feel is realistic without having to change the millage rate at all, it generates $460,000 of assumed revenue for the district. So, factoring that in and then making a reduction to balance the budget, we were able to come in at $115.1 million in the budget that we're proposing this evening. So, just to give you some, some information on where the revenues come from, 84% of our revenues come from local sources, so primarily real estate taxes, interest collection, real estate transfer taxes are the, are the big line items in the local budget. The state sources come in at 14%, and then our federal at two. So, just to give you kind of a comparison, the statewide average on local tax collection, 56%, and statewide, 36%. Those are the averages across the state. So, primarily, most of the schools in southeastern Pennsylvania see a much higher percentage of revenue coming in on, from local sources versus state sources. And then in our expenditures, you can see there that salaries and benefits make up the, the largest chunk of our budget. That 73% of our budget goes to salaries and benefits, which you would assume. We're a service-based organization. We provide a service of educating students. So, our greatest resource in the district is our people and what we invest in our people to educate students. And then you can see some of our other categories there that go into what we, we need to provide those services to the staff to educate our students. One of the other larger line items in the budget is split between the dues and interest, 5%, and the other financing and debt principal. That's our debt service that we repay on bonds that we've issued for the district. That makes up about 7.1%. And it's split, some of the portion is in the interest, and some of that is within the debt principal, and there's other things in, in both of those categories that make up the other 5% or so between those two categories. So, this is just another way to show the, the expenditures. The previous slide was, we have a chart of accounts that the state provides to us that we have to classify all our revenues and expenditures into. It's about 200 and some pages. If you ever have trouble falling asleep, feel free to look that up and read that. But the first slide was on what we call an object level. This is by a function level, and you can see it's a high-level classification, the largest of which is our instructional categories, which encompasses regular education, special education, vocational, and our community college expenses. And then 32% goes into support services, primarily operations, but also includes health, library, and guidance departments. And then the other 14% is athletics, our debt payments, our fund transfers, and any other items that are included in the budget. So, to show where we're at from the millage rate recommendation, we are recommending a 2.78% tax increase, which would take the millage rate from 14.2371 mils up to 14.6329 mils. And this slide is showing what the impact of that millage increase would be on the average taxpayer that has a property assessed at $723,000. It would be a $286 increase. And then the chart below just shows it, other assessed values for property owners within the district, what that millage rate increase would equate to, anywhere from an assessed value of $250,000, being a $99 increase, up to $1.5 million, equating to a $594 increase on their real estate tax bills. This is a seven-year snapshot of what our real estate tax increase has been on a percentage basis. The red line is what our increases have been. The green is what the state's Act I index, which is made up of economic indicators which cap the amount that we are able to raise taxes by without going to voter referendum. So, this year's index is at 4.1%. We're proposing a 2.78. So, over those seven years, the district's average increase has been 2.57% versus the average in the Act I over those seven years, which has been 2.84%. And these charts are just showing the millage increases going back to the 1993-94 school year. So, the chart on the left is showing the increases prior to Act I, the largest increase of which was 8.8% back in that 93-94 school year. And then when Act I was implemented, which set a cap on the taxes, the highest increase came in at 7%, with the Act I index being 4.4% in the 2008-9 school year. The increase was done through Act I exceptions. There used to be more exceptions for debt service, retirement costs, special education costs that we were eligible for. We took advantage of those that year anymore because of the, the way, as long as we've been under Act I, those exceptions have been dwindling based on what our, our finances look like. And so, this year, we're able to, to balance the budget without going above that Act I index as we have in prior years. So, these are some budget highlights, and I'll try to go through these quickly. Again, we have the 2.78% built in there, the 97% assumption for the tax collection. And you can see on our interest earnings, we budgeted $300,000 for the current year. We increased that budget to $1 million for next year's budget. Now, knowing interest rates can change based on inflationary factors and what the Fed does moving forward, I think in the short term, we've made a conservative estimate based on where our rates now, where we're anticipating them, but that may not be a steady line item in, in budget years moving past next year just because of the fluidity of interest rates. And then our SR3 allocation, that'll be the final year that we have funds to spend down on our ARPS or funds, and we're approximating about $935,000 there. So, on the expenditure side, just some things to highlight. The budget does maintain our current class size recommendations. K-12, I know last year I said elementary. I will correct that for this year. It's K-12 at the class sizes that are listed there. Some of our teaching and learning highlights is our continued implementation of the MTSS programs, some professional development through the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, continuing with our belonging through a culture of dignity initiative across the district, and then in the implementation of a new high school counseling program. From the student services, we have a number of items to highlight, the Radnor Early Learning Academy, our transition program, some increase in our special education student population that we need to provide services which have corresponding expenditures, increased emotional support services, intensive language class at Wayne Elementary School, an alternative education program at the high school, and then an increase in our autistic and emotional support staffing levels to accommodate those student needs across the district. From our technology budget, we're continuing our one-to-one device program. We have our classrooms-for-tomorrow program, Radnor Middle School device upgrades, and then upgrade to financial HR and digital archiving software. And then on the operations side, as we've talked about at the Finance Committee meetings, we do have in the budget included a $1 million transfer to our capital reserve fund that will support upcoming capital projects that we've identified through the facility study. We are planning on replacing four of our diesel-fueled buses with new propane buses on a regular replacement cycle, and then the corresponding expenditures to the $935,000 that we budgeted in revenue for the remaining SR3 programs that we'll be funding through those federal monies. From a timing perspective, we're presenting the proposed final budget this evening at May's Finance Committee meeting. We'll have an update, and we'll present the final budget at that time. I'm not anticipating major changes to the budget unless there's some new items that come forth to us, the biggest of which will be our Homestead-Farmstead allocation. I've budgeted that that would remain flat. If we get additional money through that program from the state from gambling proceeds, we'd factor that into the budget. I'll have that data usually on May 1st is when their deadline is to release that. So, if there's a change to that assumption, we'll make that change into the final budget. And then the deadlines to present this, we'll have this posted on our website within the next few days, and then we have the deadline to advertise, and then the May 30th board meeting to approve the final budget. With that, I'll try to back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Pauling. Appreciate the presentation. Don't go anywhere, because I'm going to open it up for comments and questions in case anybody on the board has any. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Ms. Solomon?
So, I just want to reiterate what I said in the Finance Committee meeting, which is my absolute delight with this budget. I'm thrilled that we're coming in at less than 3%. And I think that it's important to acknowledge really everybody in the district that contributed to this really strong financial position, and that includes our staff and the, the teachers and the various bargaining units for being reasonable. And so, that allows us to come in with a fair budget that does not overburden our taxpayers. And so, I think, you know, people in Radnor expect excellent education, and they're getting it, and they're getting it at a fair price. And so, this is a win-win-win. And so, just, you know, I was really, really thrilled to see this budget, and so, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solomon. Ms. Solomon, anybody else? Ms. Stern?
So, I'm so happy with the budget. Thank you, Mr. Pauling. I'm so happy Mrs. Solomon is happy.
So am I.
Yeah. No, she's, she's, she's been very consistent in her message the last few years, so, well, really for a very long time. But I'm genuinely happy that you are really happy with the budget. I mean that sincerely. The one piece on the budget that I just want to mention because we have a member of one of the collective bargaining agreements in the, in the, who's probably listening, the steep increase, then the unexpected increase that we saw in the prescription coverage cost. And I'm calling that out only to say that, you know, I've been, long been an advocate for when our, and I appreciate the work, and we worked hard with our collective bargaining agreements this year, and I feel really great about them. But as I recall, we had a conversation about, let's talk about ways that the memberships can help us help them. And so, I hope that we are able to engage in some conversations about, just so every bargaining unit can understand the impact of how the prescription coverage impacts the bottom line and ways that we can, that's a, that's a measure. I don't want anyone to not have the things that they need, but if we can work together and partner together to understand, because that was a really unexpected and rather large jump. I equate that to about three teachers' salaries with benefits and all that. And so, I'm glad that you were able to make some other adjustments with the collection rate and that we were able to bring down the, the tax increase. And I just hope that we can work with our, our bargaining units to, that's, it's concerning. That one was a big jump, and it was concerning. Nothing that anybody did wrong, but let's just make sure we can be proactive in that one and not have several years of that in a row, and it will become quite burdensome. But I'm, but it was a great job, and I'm also really thrilled with the budget. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stern. Is there anybody else on the board who has a comment? Looks like, I'm going to start down, Dr. Babson's got his mic on first. Sorry, Ms. Dunn, you're next.
Just a very quick note of praise to you, Mr. Pauling, and staff. I just think it's a, it's a great budget, but it's also, I think, just very well explained. I just wanted to sort of underline that, that it's one thing to do a budget well, which is the priority, but, you know, communicating it clearly and effectively to the public, starting with us, I think is very important as well. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Babson. Ms. Dunn?
I echo the, I appreciate the, I know, it's hard to, these barriers are miserable. I really appreciate the breakouts. I especially appreciate the slide, I think this new this year, of the expenditures by function. That's actually helpful because it lines up with the numbers in the budget, the numbered sections. I just wanted to, I'm happy with the budget. I'm going to vote for it. I just wanted to point out to the administration, especially the administration at the high school, that these are class size recommendations, and I by no means want them to cram 28 kids into a classroom if they don't have to. And I know that we have situations like a culminating AP language class that we might need to run with fewer than 15 students. And I personally want to make it very clear, I don't expect you to add extra kids to a classroom. If there are problems running classes at reasonable sizes, I hope you will tell Mr. Pauling. I hope you will tell the board so we can make adjustments. Because I know we've got some classes that are particularly large and controversial in their size this year. So, I would just, I'm assuming there's room in the budget for that. I just want to make it clear, this is not a mandate that you put 28 kids in a classroom. Thanks.
I will say the administration has no problem letting me know when they need to add things.
I especially appreciate the slide, I think this is new this year, of the expenditures by function. That's actually helpful because it lines up with the numbers in the budget, the numbered sections. I just wanted to, I'm happy with the budget, I'm going to vote for it. I just wanted to point out to the administration, especially the administration at the high school, that these are class size recommendations, and I by no means want them to cram 28 kids into a classroom if they don't have to. And I know that we have situations like a culminating AP language class that we might need to run with fewer than 15 students. And I personally want to make it very clear, I don't expect you to add extra kids to a classroom. If there are problems running classes at reasonable sizes, I hope you will tell Mr. Pauling, I hope you will tell the board so we can make adjustments. Because I know we've got some classes that are particularly large and controversial in their size this year. So I would just, I'm assuming there's room in the budget for that. I just want to make it clear, this is not a mandate that you put 28 kids in a classroom. Thanks.
I will say the administration has no problem letting me know when they need to add things to the budget.
Teachers being a priority, I guess, is my point.
Whatever, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Pauling. And Ms. Dunn, anybody else, any other board members have anything to say or questions? All right, Dr. Batchelor, I think you had some.
Mr. Moore is there?
I'm so sorry.
I'd like to give a brief comment.
Sorry, forgot about that. My apologies.
Oh, no problem. I didn't forget. So the headline is that I think that this budget should be larger by about $1.15 million, and that should represent a $1.15 million additional allocation to the capital reserve fund. And the reason for that is, I'll refer my fellow board members to the deliberation we had at the April 11th finance committee meeting, and then also at the special board meeting last week. The upshot is, at the finance committee meeting on April 11th, there was a lot of discussion about, knowing what we know about our capital needs, the feasibility study, is there an argument for, at this time, when the Act One Index is unusually high, to put a little bit more into the capital reserve fund than we have been? We appreciate, and it's a great practice, that we are putting a steady amount of money into the capital reserve fund, both to plan for things we know about and also be able to pay for things that we don't know about. And at the April 11th finance committee meeting, the administration came back and essentially said, we're right about where we want to be. We thought about the idea of putting a little more into the capital reserve fund based on what we know.
Mr. Moore, we're having an audio problem here. Hold on a sec.
Try again. I didn't touch anything.
Try again, Mr. Moore. Let's see if you're, here comes Ian to the rescue.
Okay, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can, yep, we're good. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay. I don't know exactly where I cut out, but the upshot is that at the April 11th meeting, the administration, after, you know, hearing some comments about the idea of putting more into the capital reserve because of what our needs are regarding the Ithin project and other capital needs, you know, should we do that or not, the administration said, no, we're actually about, right about where we need to be. We don't think we should put extra in beyond what we already are. And then low and behold, next week, we're having a special board meeting where there was an unbudgeted expenditure of $1.15 million that could be and is anticipated, I think, to be pulled out of the capital reserve fund. So what I would suggest, that if we were right where we should have been April 11th, and then a week later, we were asked to vote on an additional expenditure, at this time, when the Act One Index is a little bit higher, that would be the right time to restore those savings. We might be unable to restore them at a time when the Act One Index is lower. So I made that point on the vote last week at the special board meeting, and I won't belabor it. I also did not ask Mr. Pauling in advance to calculate what that additional millage would be because I anticipated that this would still pass, having already made that point. But if I haven't persuaded any of you such that the budget does not pass as written, I'm sure Mr. Pauling could also do that calculation and a new motion could be made. So I ask you all to consider revising your position based on that. But if this passes, regardless, I'm very thankful for the administration for bringing this forward to us. We're doing this in April so that we can have the final budget in May, and all of their hard work is appreciated. And everyone in our community is appreciated. We heard that although we are thankful for everything we get from the state and federal governments, 84% of our revenues come from our own local taxpayers here. This is a community that has continued to show that they are willing to invest in public education, and that is a priority for our community, and we are in good hands whether the vote goes along the lines of what I have suggested or if it passes as written in the agenda. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. Of course, it was very important to hear from our finance chair. So again, my apologies for passing over the disembodied voice in the room, and thank you for your comments. I'm going to see, Dr. Batchelor might have some summary comments to.
No, just echo a lot of the comments. Thank you, Mr. Pauling, for your hard work and the whole administrative team. This is a process that begins in the fall and involves our entire administrative team as we move through this process. Mr. Moore's comments do speak to that the reality is, we are embarking on a rather large facilities, not only a long-term plan, but a project. We've committed that we're going to be building a new elementary school at Ithin to replace the existing Ithin that was built in 1963 and based on a lot of the current deficiencies. I give credit, a lot of credit to the board and those that have been part of our steering committees for the reasons why we need to build a new Ithin as we move forward. I believe right now, we have the right plan, and it will adjust and we'll evaluate it each year, but we have a plan that by putting aside dollars towards capital, which we are purposely doing, we've had past years within our budget where the capital dollars have come from what, 1% to 3% of a surplus we might have. And that 1% to 3% of a surplus at the end of the year has been good budgeting each year, but that's how we've funded our capital. We are now, in this budget, purposely funding our capital, knowing that we have a lot of long-term capital needs. We will continue to do that. We also have our improved ratings, and we will look to go out, and we haven't made this decision, but I'm anticipating that we will look to go out, to float a bond as we move forward for something like Ithin and possibly other projects that are larger-scale projects, whether it's replacing a roof in the future at one of our buildings if it's a large project. And because of our situation where our debt right now is, our percentage contribution to our debt service is about 7.1%, we do anticipate, and you know, that that will increase as we take on these projects, that debt service, and we will plan to have some of those dollars from capital can help and support us in that in the future. So the good news with this budget is that we are continuing to grow as a district. I do think Mr. Moore makes a very good point, that we have to look at each year, and we have to be thoughtful as we look at our buildings and our facilities, and we look at the Act One Index to make sure we're aware of what is our ability each given year to tax. But we also take that recommendation that we give administratively, and I know the board takes that power to tax our community very seriously, and that we look to be good stewards of our tax dollars. And we believe that this is a plan that continues to move us forward, allows us to grow, and I think as Ms. Solomon said, is reasonable for our community moving forward. But I am excited that thanks to the hard work of the team, that there are areas where we're continuing to grow within this budget as well, both when we look at our educational program and we look at our facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Batchelor. Ms. Dunn?
So he's the disembodied voice. He doesn't want to put you on the spot. If you can, if we were to add the capital money that he's asking for, does that take our tax increase over 3%?
It would probably put us close to the max of 4.1% if we were adding $1 million.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Dr. Babson?
No, I was just, I was literally going to ask the same thing that Ms. Dunn did, so thanks.
Okay, Ms. Monahan?
The only thing I want to add, you know, I think Bradley does raise a very valid point. However, for me personally, one thing that I factor in is the last three years, we've had surpluses at the end of the year. So those have not been expected, those have not been budgeted for. You know, we, as of the proposal or the projection that you shared with us, it's like 3.3 million that we're going to have. So I kind of equate that as the amount of unexpected, you know, money that we had to address in the past month, which was unfortunate for all, but it's something with any construction project that we have to manage through. So I'm still comfortable with this budget moving forward as is.
Thanks, Ms. Monahan.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Dunn, because Dr. Batchelor has some remarks too.
So just the last question, the, because I know there's been a lot of moving number, there are always a lot of moving numbers, but this 3.3 projected surplus for this school year already accounts for the $1.4 million change order. It wasn't 1.4, it was like 1.1.
Yeah, so we were anticipating paying for that out of the capital reserve funds rather than the general fund, so that money is not earmarked as part of what we're presenting in the budget tonight or as part of that surplus.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Just for some context, we currently have between what we have committed in the general fund and what we already have that we've transferred to the capital reserve fund, about $17 million between the two funds to allocate towards projects. That does not include the additional million that we have in the budget for this evening. It includes the million that we've transferred in the current year. It also does not include the money that you mentioned, Ms. Monahan, in the surplus as well, that we would come back to the board usually when the audit's complete, when we have that final number, and make commitments of fund balance recommendations at that time.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Batchelor.
And I was just going to add, in our capital reserve, I mean, once we put those dollars there, they're to be spent on capital, and we can't move those and use them for other purposes. And it is there for things, for capital improvement. So it is, I think it is appropriate time to spend from that, from that reserve account. As to our surpluses, and it's an interesting word, surplus, you know, it's, one person's surplus is another person's good budgeting year, depending the year, you know. Coming in at 1% to 3%, I'm glad we're, yes, we're looking at that situation instead of coming, you know, where we're over. And then we've been trying to use those dollars to support our capital. And it's not that our surplus is necessarily a surprise. There are years, though, our collection rate or the interim taxes do come in higher than we've anticipated. And those are then our opportunities, and in past years when we haven't budgeted any dollars for capital, those have been those opportunities to put those dollars into capital moving forward. And now since we've done that, we're recommending using some of that for that, for that situation where, for the, for where we are looking to fulfill the needs of our current project moving forward.
Okay, so with that, I'm, and seeing that everybody has contributed to this conversation, I think to the extent that they are inclined to, I will repeat the recommended action and then call for the vote. And the recommended action again is that the board adopts the 2023-2024 Proposed Final General Fund budget in the amount of $115,105,357, representing a real estate tax increase of .3958 mils or 2.78% over 2022-2023. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
And I see that that's eight in favor. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, and that's one opposed, Mr. Moore opposed. All right, thank you very much, and we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda.
Mrs. Goldman, this is Mr. Moore. I do need to leave the meeting early, so please have the minutes reflect that I left the meeting at this time. Thank you all, I appreciate you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Have a good evening. All right, that, as I said, we're going, moving into the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. With the consent of all board members, they are therefore grouped and approval is given in one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, the board president will move it to an appropriate place on the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to pull anything from consent? Ms. Solomon?
Yes, I would like to pull 13.04.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing that, I am going to ask for a motion to approve consent agenda items 9.01 through 15.02, except for 13.04 and 15.01, because we've already approved that one. All those in, do I have a motion?
So moved.
That wasn't correct. It was 13.04, not 15.04.
You said 15.01.
I thought I said 13.04 and 15.01. Did I not say that?
No, you said 15 and 15.
My apologies, okay. The consent agenda, items 9.01 through 15.02, except for 13.04 and 15.01, which was already approved. Do I have a motion for those items?
So moved.
All right, just one at a time. Ms. Solomon, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jubelier. All those in favor? And that's eight to nothing for those items. Ms. Solomon, 13.04.
I will not be supporting this for the same reasons that I haven't supported some of the previous change orders. To me, we bid on a process, a multimillion-dollar construction project. There were contingencies built into that. We're trusting experts to give estimates of what they think, you know, this project, their contribution will cost, and it seems every week, we keep getting them coming back saying, oh, oops, we were wrong, give us another 20,000, give us another 100,000. And so I will not support this. I, it looks like, I mean, just an endless stream of, you know, excuses why work can't be done for what they said they would do it for.
All right, would anybody else like to move this item 13.04?
I would like to move it.
Okay, and then we can have discussion about it. So Ms. Dunn is making a motion. Does anybody have one a second?
Second.
Ms. Stern? Okay, Ms. Dunn, did you have something you wanted to say on it?
I just, I think that that's a mischaracterization of the change order in question. I'm not going to rehash it all. If people are interested, please see the facilities meeting from last, please see, actually, the special board meeting we had.
No, no, the board.
No, I'm sorry, the facilities meeting that we had last week.
This is a different one, so.
Yeah, yeah, it was in the facilities meeting. Thanks.
Okay, does anybody else have any other comments? Can we have a motion and a second? We can go to the vote. Mr. Jubelier, you had a comment to make? No? Dr. Batchelor does.
And, just like, you know, we continue to talk about at our facilities meeting, both the project at the high school and continue to talk about moving forward with Ithin, the way public education construction projects work, the way the parameters and the rules apply to public schools, the lowest bidder requirements and contingencies in change orders unfortunately are part of a project. We knew that going in to this project, and we need to recognize moving forward with a project, that these things, some of these things happen, some of these things happen based on our requests, some of these things happen based on unforeseen parts of the project as well as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. So this is item 13.04. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving this item, please indicate by raising your hand.
Aye.
Okay, I see that that's seven. All those opposed? One. Ms. Solomon? Okay, that, that motion passes by count of seven to one. Thank you very much. And we will move to our reports from board liaisons and community announcements. Mr. Moore, probably we'll catch up with him next meeting about the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. I assume he would say there was an election taking place, which we just took care of on the agenda. And we'll move to the Delaware County Community College. Ms. Solomon?
Yes, the Delaware County Community College typically puts forth their budget for the following year in April. This year, that has been delayed, and so you can look for it next month. I believe it will be on our consent agenda for May.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Solomon. And the Delaware County School Board's Legislative Council, Mr. Jubelier?
Yes, the Delaware County School Board's Legislative Council met on April 12th. We talked about some recently introduced legislation, including potential changes or renewal of PlanCon, some new charter legislation, and some movement with legislation to incent folks going into the teaching profession vis a vis tax credits and other pathways to get into this honorable and noble profession, and we so desperately need new blood. We also spoke about, and now it has passed, Advocacy Day in Harrisburg. I don't want to steal if Dr. Babson's going to mention it, but PSBA Advocacy Day was held virtually on April 18th. I invite, whether it's Mrs. Goldman, who I knew participated, I unfortunately got laid up with an injury and missed it, so I welcome to pass the baton if you wanted to give a brief report there. No, no pressure. And I'll just remind everyone again, in your packets you see, and we've gotten email invitations to the May 19th Delaware County Intermediate Unit Legislative Breakfast. So hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Jubelier. And I will say, we missed you at Advocacy Day, but it was great. We had a meeting with our state rep, Representative Barowski, and we also had a coordinated state senator meeting. All the, the four state senators from Delaware County came together. There were 32 people on that call, several superintendents. It really was a nice, robust conversation, and we spent about an hour together talking about different issues that were on the agenda to be discussed, and some other ones that organically came forward. But it was really nice because so many different school districts were represented, and to see the four senators there together, or in some cases, their staff members, was really nice, and hopefully they learned a lot from those of us who are the boots on the ground and in helping to inform policy at the state level. So we'll catch you ne, we won't catch you next time. Aw, well.
I'll make a guest appearance.
Okay, great, sounds good. All right, so that brings us to Dr. Babson for the Pennsylvania School Boards Association Liaison Report.
Well, you kind of stole my thunder there with the.
Sorry, double sorry over here. Sorry, double sorry over here.
Yes, April 18 was Annual Advocacy Day. The event was held virtually, and Ms. Goldman and Mr. Jubelier gave a nice overview there. Unfortunately, I could not participate because I had COVID, so I was, I was not able to participate. So, moving on, tis the season for submitting proposals for the legislative platform for 2024. The window for submitting proposals is already upon us. It's been upon us now for over three weeks since April 3, and it extends until June 30. So all proposals will receive initial consideration by the PSBA Platform Committee on August 26, with final consideration by the Delegate Assembly on November 4, which Mr. Moore and I attended last, last year. Ms. Dunn, you participated as well, yes, remotely, right? Questions regarding the platform adoption process should be directed to, well, I guess you could, you could direct them to me, I guess, but you could directly get, hear it from the horse's mouth from PSBA themselves and the representative there. Her name is Cindy Eckard. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Babson. And it sounds like GRCC maybe will make another go-round of the legislative platform proposal process. What do you think, Chair Jubelier? Okay, thank you, Dr. Babson, for.
Are we trading stealing thunders?
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any other community announcements to make?
I just want to remind everybody that the ABC House, oh, go, go ahead, Ms. Duffy, super, no, just that the ABC House fundraiser is this Friday night. Yeah, 6:30, thank you so much. It's a great cause to support.
Thank you, Ms. Stern. Any other community announcements? Okay, then I will make board announcements. On Tuesday, April 25, at. That's right, that's today. That's, sorry about that, let me cross that one off the list. Let's move into May. Tuesday, May 9, 2023, at 5:00, we will have our Policy Committee meeting, and at 6:00 on that day, our Finance Committee meeting, and at 7:00, our Facilities Committee meeting, all taking place in the ground floor conference room of the Radnor Township School District Administration Building, 135 South Wayne Avenue in Wayne. And then on Tuesday, May 23, 2023, at 5:00, we will have our Curriculum Committee meeting, and at 6:30, we will have our Government Relations and Communications Committee meeting. Those two will take place in the ground floor conference room of the Radnor Township School District Administration Building. And then our next business meeting will be back here in the Radnorshire Room on Tuesday, May 30, 2023, at 7:00. And we will move at this time to our second round of public comment. As per Board Policy 6, the board provides an opportunity at each regular board meeting for eligible participants to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. Public comment can be made either in person or by telephone recording when circumstances prevent a community member from attending the board meeting. For details on how to make public comment by telephone recording, please visit rtst.org/board. Public commenters are required to state their full name and town and may make one comment per public comment period for no more than four minutes per comment. Administration will respond to general questions raised during public comments sometime after the meeting. Parents and guardians with specific questions or comments about their child's educational experience are encouraged to contact their child's teacher and/or building principal. Is there any public comment to be made in the room tonight? All right, seeing none, and before I make a motion to adjourn, I'm just going to announce that the board will go back into executive session to discuss legal items immediately following this, the conclusion of this meeting. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Who would like to make that motion?
So moved.
Ms. Solomon, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's an eight-nothing vote to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.